Welcome you to the work session of the June 19th, 2012 Bollering Board of Commissioners meeting. We've got two items on our work session today. The first is the discussion of driver technology. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. We all agree that it's important for us to use technology as best we can when it's cost-effective to improve safety, to increase efficiency, or to save money. Over the last couple of months, we've been looking at innovative new technology we think has the benefit of accomplishing all those goals. Dave Weisbrot has led the initiative and is here to report on the results. David?
There's no doubt that over the last 10 years advancements in technology have increased productivity in fleets and not only productivity but made fleets a lot safer. It's been awhile since we've looked at how technology can make our fleet safer. Normally, we rely on training and coaching of employees and we mainly focus technology on in a safety realm when it comes to like personal protective equipment, things like that. Very seldom do we focus on driving and how technology can make that safer. What I'd like to do is give you a little bit of history on this project. Last fall, Mr. Febo instructed a project team consisting of Jeff Lashley, Bobby Phelps, Barry Harris, Kyle Bearden, and myself to look into fleet tracking technology for which he has had some prior experience with. And he asked us to look into fleet tracking and asked us to look at some of the operational benefits and risk management benefits of that technology. Fleet tracking, if you're not familiar with it, some of the key features for fleet tracking, it's a geographic information system technology. And what it does is it provides real-time vehicle location and heading, trip mapping details. It gives you the start time, the stop time, the speed history, the mileage history of your fleet. And some of the benefits, again mostly operational, is to provide optimization of routing, provide some dispatching services, and route history. The Public Works Department has looked into this and could provide you with more detail on how it might be an operational benefit. But what I want to focus on now is something that we ran into when we were looking at the fleet tracking technologies. And just for sake of conversation, I'm going to call it driver video capturing technology, which is mostly a risk management benefit. This product that we came across, it not only provides the driver video capturing technology, but it also has the capability of providing the fleet tracking that we originally started looking into. So it has both. The way the system works, it's a real-time NCAB feedback. It's not continuous video capturing, so it's not invasive as far as a privacy issue. It warns of excessive speed and captures G-force events. And basically what it does, it's triggered by events such as excessive speed, hard braking, tight cornering. And what it does is, as soon as one of these G-force events are triggered, the camera backs up four seconds and it videos the event that took place right before. It videos what was taking place right before the event that triggered the capturing of the video. And I'm going to show you some examples here in a second of how that works. The recorded event also includes audio. And here's the basic circle of how this product works. You have the driver and they're driving and there's a captured event. Well, let's say for instance, the driver has to brake suddenly. The camera picks it up and it's triggered and it's sent via cellular to a company in San Diego, California where they have staff reviewing these triggered events. Okay, they're looking at the driver. Did the driver have their seatbelt on? Were they focused on the road? What caused the triggered event? Were they following too closely? They look at the whole scenario and they provide reports for which our management has access to and where we can sit down and coach the driver on any risky driving behavior. So then the driver returns to the field and is a safer driver because they've been made aware of their risky driving habits. I'm going to show you some examples of how this works. These are actual video clips of triggered events. The first one that I'm going to show you is a driver who is following too close and is texting on the cellphone. This first video does not result in an accident, so this would be a case where we wouldn't even know about it. So the big benefit here is that this technology provides you with leading indicators. Normally, we identify a risky driver after the fact, after they've already been involved in the accident, and then we say, well, this driver needs more training. This technology provides you leading indicators and it identifies the higher-risk drivers so you can focus your training on that individual person. Let me show you this video. Okay, you can see that the camera, I'll play it again for you, but you can see that the camera is on the driver. Obviously, he's not paying attention to the road. He's looking down at his cellphone. He's texting. He has a vehicle in front of him. Following distance, probably not really that bad, a fairly good following distance. And then down here at the bottom, this is part of the G-force technology. It measures forward and lateral G-forces. And this is, in the technology that's built in the camera, this is what triggers that captured recording. Okay? As I advance through this slowly, you can watch those numbers increase. Okay, so you can see forward is negative .11. Okay, there, you can see it increased where his attention was focused on the truck and he applied his brakes. Again, not resulting in accident, however, this is a risky driver that needs some coaching. Show you this one here.
He's eating, right?
Yeah. If you, I'm going to play this again. I'm going to turn this up and you can hear him say sorry to the other driver. It's kind of funny. And notice what he has in his hand. Of course, I don't think we'll have the air freshener hanging from the rearview mirror. That'd probably be a policy that we would put in place. That's when he says sorry. He has the hamburger in his hand. I really don't know what he was thinking, but he clearly went through that red light.
And he's working for someone. That's a van of some sort.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Now, he gets back to his fleet, checks out at the end of the day, and no one knows that he almost caused a very serious accident. This one here, we're going to focus on driver exoneration. I mean, I've been here 15 years and I know of probably three cases for sure where the other driver, following an accident, alleged that we ran the light. And our driver claims that, no, the other person ran the light. And this would do away with all of that questioning. This is a case, this is the, this is a case, guy's driving a bus and it's my understanding that the operator of this vehicle claimed the bus driver ran the light and was suing for a million-plus. This video got rid of that very quickly and the entity was out very little money. I had to turn it down because of some language there, but. Trying to see how that works there. Let me back it up. You can see clearly, the driver has the green light and you can see the vehicle getting ready to pull out in front of him. Notice the passenger here. The story that I'm getting to is this passenger refused to be seat-belted in. He did not want to put his seatbelt on. He's sitting in a wheelchair. And you can see what happens to him. We're approaching the light. It's green. Here you can see the forward G-forces starting to increase. And the guy in the wheelchair flying forward. The guy in the truck. This actually ended up in not any real serious injury, but it could have been. Anyway, it's just an example of how this technology works and how it can provide you information that you wouldn't normally know and also provide you information that could exonerate you from lots of dollars spent. Again, I'll touch on this very briefly. Risky behavior, they say that every 100 risky behavior, risky driving behaviors results in one collision. This is the risk pyramid, so to speak. It's the same way with injuries. For every little thing that you do, every shortcut that you take, the more you do of those, the more likelihood you're going to have a severe occurrence. And so the term frequency breeds severity. What we're doing with this technology is we would be reducing our frequency of risky driving behavior, therefore reducing the likelihood of having that severe accident. Eighty percent of all collisions occur within three seconds of an inattentive event. That's a study done by National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration. Again, this technology would reduce risky behavior, would reduce inattentive events. This is an example of a report that is put together by this company. This is actually one that was done after a three-month period. And it identifies your higher-risk drivers and it tells you what they did to.
They can't hear you on TV if you step away from the microphone.
Oh, sorry. This report shows you the higher-risk drivers and it shows you where you need to focus your attention. You can see that usually, and I think this would apply in most cases, a small percentage of your drivers actually account for a majority of your overall risk. And you can identify, or you can focus on those drivers and coach those poor driving habits. And then not only that, but we can recognize good driving habits. I know that we've had, I know that there are a couple officers that I know that have been in the police force for lots of years and have never had an accident. And we can recognize those individuals with their safe driving habits. This is just another report. This is a report that supervisors would get, or managers, however you set it up. And it actually shows the events that the driver's been involved in over a period of time, tells what they were doing. In this case here, this driver hit a pothole. And while that was not a risky driving event, it did trigger, it did trigger the camera to record and it ended up where he's on a cellphone and not wearing a seatbelt. So he didn't do anything that risky as far as driving goes, but because the technology was in place and he hit a pothole, it triggered the event because of the jar, we find out that this driver has a habit of talking on a cellphone evidently.
Dave, do they sign on to the, when they get in the vehicle, do they sign on? Is that how they do it?
No, they don't. But when the administrator will receive these reports, we can identify that, who that driver is, and then their staff will pick up on that and start basically memorizing our drivers. They'll have those in file. It would take a little bit of administrative on our part to identify the driver. So let's talk about the pilot program and product cost and return on investment. The pilot program first we'll talk about. It's, normally, the standard pilot program with DriveCam involves 40 vehicles over a three-month period at very little cost to anyone who wants to participate. Talking with Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services, and actually, I actually agree with them on this. We didn't feel that 40 of our vehicles in a three-month study would provide us the information we would need to spend the amount of money that it would cost to fully outfit our fleet with this technology. And DriveCam, the company that we've been talking with, they actually agreed with us and they said, okay, we're so confident in our product and we're so confident that you're going to benefit from our product, that we agree to outfit 275 vehicles, which is our entire fleet, for a full year at a subscription cost of $50,000. And the installation cost, doing it in-house, is going to be about $8,000. And Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services has approved to pay for 50% of this study. So we could basically do this pilot program for $29,000 for a full year, which is, I think, which is pretty good, a pretty good cost, pretty cheap for a one-year study. Assuming that we have a 40 to 75% reduction in auto physical damage, basically, we're just talking about bent metal, and assuming a 5 to 10% fuel savings and a 5 to 10% maintenance savings, and Kentucky League of Cities providing half of the pilot study. The first-year pilot study return on investment with the city's total cost of $29,000. Looking at it from a low end to a high end, the low-end percentages to the high-end percentages, the city would estimate the net savings to be between $39,300 to $108,000. So actually, we'll make money by doing the pilot study.
Dave, can I ask you how you arrived at your assumptions there?
DriveCam indicates that we will have a 50 to 80% reduction in risky driving behavior. And I just correlated that with losses. I compared, I looked at our losses over the last 10 years and I eliminated the highest dollar value loss and the lowest dollar value loss, came up with an average. And then I used the percentages that DriveCam gave me.
And DriveCam based their assumptions on past behavior from other cities?
Yes, yes. Fuel savings, DriveCam estimates between 6 and 12% fuel savings. I used 5 to 10. And maintenance savings, DriveCam estimated between 10 and 15%. I reduced that, after talking with Barry Harris, we reduced it to 5 to 10.
And they make those assumptions based on the fact that the camera's present makes the driver more aware of what they're doing?
Exactly. Yeah, because the camera's present, we believe that the driver will drive more economically, not wanting to trigger the camera. Also, another thing that I failed to mention, we can set the camera up to warn the driver of excessive speed. We can set the camera up to, let's say, no more than 10 miles per hour over. And if the driver's exceeding 10 miles per hour over this posted speed limit, and because of the GIS technology, it's set up to where it knows what the posted speed limit is wherever the vehicle is driving. It's pretty amazing. So if that driver's exceeding the speed limit, or at least 10 over, the lights on the camera will flash to let the operator know that they're speeding. And then if they don't back off their speed, then it will capture it by doing a recorded event. So we believe that the drivers will be easier on the brakes, easier on the acceleration, and save some fuel. After the pilot study, and we get into years two through five, with the same assumptions and Kentucky League of Cities providing $24,000 per year for years two through five, assuming that we reduce our losses by at least 40%, that is a stipulation that KLC has thrown in there following the pilot study, they will give us $24,000 for year number two and year number three. If we continue to meet those numbers, then they've agreed to another $24,000 in year four and five. So the total cost to the city per year for years two through five would be $109,000. That's an annual, that includes the annual subscription and the hardware cost divided over four years, divided over the years two through five. And then, of course, after the hardware's paid for, year six would just include your subscription cost. And for the entire fleet, subscription cost would be approximately $90,000. But looking at the, using the same estimated reduction in expenditures for bent metal, fuel savings and maintenance, and then looking at the city's net cost and savings, it would be a tool that would cost the city per year $41,000. And I do look at this as a tool, not as a moneymaker, although it definitely has potential to keep you from spending money. But a tool that would cost the city $41,000 a year, or actually save us up to $27,000 per year. And not to mention those losses that don't occur, I mean, those major losses. The numbers could be a lot better. I think this is, excuse me, conservative. And what the city net cost and savings does not include are intangibles. Everything we're looking at here are items that can be measured. Those items that cannot be measured would include the time spent at an accident scene, the supervisor's time spent on putting reports together, my time spent reviewing them, sending them to the city manager, the city manager reviewing them. There's a lot of intangibles. In fact, they say that intangible costs are five times the tangible. So you could actually take these numbers and multiply them by five as far as the savings goes. The intangibles and the goodwill of the city. The last thing we want to see is the city on the front page of the newspaper because of a poor driving habit. So I think there's more to look at than the cost of the tool, the tangible cost of the tool. So in summary, we did send out a request for information after we found this information and the technology after reviewing. The team, myself and Jeff and Barry and Kyle and Bobby Phelps, we spoke with a couple other companies about different technologies. And we sent out an RFI. And basically, DriveCam was the only company with this technology who agreed to do a full-year, full-fleet pilot study. And that's why we're focusing on this company at this time. The return on investment, the numbers that I've just given you, does not take into account fleet tracking capabilities and the operational benefits that that might provide, nor does it take into the additional cost of fleet tracking, which would be $9 per vehicle per month. That would be a separate issue. Again, Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services commitment, 50% of the pilot cost, and up to $125,000 over that five-year period. And I just asked for commission support to proceed with the pilot study using the DriveCam product after approval of municipal order.
Does this technology do the similar things that I think some vehicles are now equipped with, which you would call black box information before an event? Does it record speed and brake use and that sort of thing, too?
It does. Well, it does record speed. As far as brake use, with the G-force indicators, that would indicate brake use. I don't know, I'm not real familiar with what a black box does exactly, so I'm not sure.
Well, in aircraft, it measures all the gauges or records all the gauges.
Right.
But in the vehicles, I think it's attached under the seat now that, and it does similar things, but I didn't know if it would coincide with that.
Does speed and braking.
That's it.
I think that does speed and braking. Go back to that screen right before this one, if you don't mind, Dave. Tell me again what fleet tracking capabilities, add a cost of $9 per vehicle per month?
Right.
In addition to the cost that you explained on the other?
That's correct.
So what's that for?
Fleet tracking, the fleet tracking product can be turned on and off in any vehicle that you want it turned on and off on. So for instance, if we saw that there was an operational benefit in the Public Works Department for 10 trucks during leaf season, we could turn on the fleet tracking portion of this, just in those nine vehicles, and get that operational benefit by that technology and not have to pay for it in the entire fleet.
I first became aware of this in my former job and we used fleet tracking primarily for safety. Since we had a lot of snow and part of the county was rural, you would have trucks dispatched with single drivers. So we would have someone like Barry in a room with a plasma screen, tracking all the vehicles. And then from that tracking, be able to assign them to high-need areas where you get wind blow in a road, you're able to do that. This fleet tracking also allows us to know where all our vehicles are 24 hours a day. And it would allow us to make sure that our people are at the places they're responsibly supposed to be and not somewhere else.
And staff reaction, Dave?
I'm sorry?
Staff reaction to this?
You know, it's been mixed.
Is that a nice way of putting it?
Well, I think it's been mixed because I think a lot of people have heard about us looking into this and don't have all of the information.
Now, it's not going to have them, again, it's only going to, when an event happens, it's not going to have a camera on them all the time.
Exactly. And I think that's where a lot of the mixed reaction comes from. I believe, some of our employees believe that the video is constantly running and someone can just flip on their computer and watch employee so-and-so as they were working during the.
Well, we have the AV, the Automatic Vehicle Locator. We brought that up a couple times in police and there was also a mixed reaction to that.
Actually, the fleet tracking capability, the fleet tracking technology will be equipped on every single one of our vehicles during the pilot study with no additional cost. So we'll get to see the benefit of fleet tracking during the pilot study in the entire fleet, so.
It can also save lives. I don't want to exaggerate, but when you have a single driver doing snow on hilly roads at 4:00 in the morning and they go over the hill, this lets you know. We don't have that same kind of situation here, but there is a safety. We don't have that same kind of situation here, but there is a safety component, too, as well as managerial. One of the issues we're facing is we're constantly trying to address our drivers, and as Dave preambled, most of that is post, ex post facto, after the fact. Please drive safer. Second wreck, oh, please drive safer twice. Now, we have, we have a tool to allow us to identify risky drivers and take action and have proof, if, if need be. Because every time you have an exposure, it could cost the city thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, as we know from some past incidents. So, we think it has value.
And that's why you have a pilot program to iron out any of these things, and it's reasonable.
I just want to thank Dave and the committee. It was Dave's idea, I believe, to get KLC involved, which I thought was quite innovative.
So, there's nothing in Kentucky like this?
There are.
That KLC?
No other cities are, are using this technology. We, we would be the first, to my knowledge. I, I, I think that there are some transits, maybe, maybe Lex, Lex Tran, that might be using cameras, but I'm not sure that they're using DriveCam. I, I have heard of maybe an ambulance service in Glasgow that, that's using this, and I'm not sure if they're affiliated with the city. But I think we, we would probably be the largest city user of DriveCam. In fact, I know that in Kentucky because I talked to the sales rep. They are using this product in Houston, Texas. Orange County, Florida, equipped their entire fleet, 2,200 vehicles. And most, the most recent city to start using this is Tyler, Texas, I think it's Tyler. And I, they equipped 110 of their vehicles.
And obviously, a lot of education to the staff prior to implementation to.
Oh, absolutely.
Make them feel as comfortable as they can with it.
There's always the possibility that we, we have a salesman speak here, where you're told one thing, you find out a lot with software, then after you, a year, you think, oh, it's really not what they said. But with the pilot program, that allows us to unbundle without any risk. I'm, I'm comfortable with moving ahead with the pilot program. I will tell you that I, it, it's a lot of money, long-term, so before we commit any further than the, the pilot program, I'd, you know, a detailed review, I'd, I'd be interested. And you mentioned something about saving time as far as dealing with the individual who had the wreck, but you're still going to spend time with the people monitoring the reports and then dealing with the people before they have the wreck, so that might be a wash. But, but I'd be interested in knowing how much time it took to manage the program as well as, as have the program in place.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll keep track of all of that during any pilot study that we do.
Anything else? Okay. Next item, I believe.
Thank you.
Discussion of Public Works.
Good job, Dave.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, second item, I think we're going to tag-team here. Jeff Lashley in the Public Works Department has made some changes to the ordinance, recommendations to the changes to the ordinance. I know a number of us have been waiting for, for these, these recommendations. They involve street cut changes in terms of specs and protocol, how you want to thoughtfully deal with obstructions of right-of-way. Some of us have dealt with that on a personal basis, going around, looking in different places in the community where there's obstruction. Some minor changes to on-street parking and our ever-present revisions to stormwater, one of our top three priorities. Jeff, are you going to present?
Come on, leadoff. Jeff Lashley, Public Works Director. I'm also going to have Melissa, Councillor, Mark Apsher, and Matt Powell. So, we'll just give you several people that will, each of us will talk about an area kind of in our focus. When we carry out our work as Public Works Department, we always like to think about our, our mission, our values, what we are supposed to do, the service we're supposed to provide to the public. This is the Public Works Mission Statement. And I think you'll see, as we go through this, we try to use these, this focus as we're looking at problems. But safely, efficiently, and professionally enhance the quality of lives, life of the citizens of Bowling Green. And this fits into that. Again, the things we're going to be talking about tonight are street cuts, some of the changes, some of the problems that we're having with street cuts and, and our proposed solutions. Obstructions on right-of-way, on-street parking, we've had some issues with this, with large trucks parking in areas where it's caused some traffic problems, some safety problems, and some stormwater revisions that we have recently completed. Discussion format, I'm going to try to keep these the same, we're going to try to get through this fairly fast. We won't get very deep into much detail, but if you want to go there, we'll certainly be glad to jump in that with you. But we'll kind of present some of the facts, the problems we're seeing, and our proposed solutions. And of course, we welcome any feedback from you guys or any direction as we pursue. I'm going to be talking about street cuts. Got a nice little picture, that doesn't have a pointer. Old picture, I'm not sure where it is, it's something I got off the internet showing all the utilities back, back in the day. And we have a lot of utilities and stuff under our roads as well. And so, how do we handle that? People are going to need to get in to make repairs, and we'll talk about some of our proposed changes. Facts, we have about 200 street cut permits, on average, that are permitted. Not saying that, you know, if somebody goes out there and cuts it, we, you know, this isn't in that number, that could have happened. Aging infrastructure drives a lot of this. Atmos is currently working on a steel gas line replacement, bare steel gas line replacement. That's gone through its useful life, and they're replacing a lot of that. So, as infrastructure ages, the frequency of repair becomes higher. But also, need to look at providing services to houses, businesses, and what have you. The majority of our cuts are done by the utility companies, about ninety percent of them, or their contractors. And again, we've talked about most of that, you know, we have to get your utility to, to your end customer. Some of the problems we've been seeing with street cuts is timeliness of repair. And I know I've driven over several where the gravel's just there, seems to go on lengthy and, and getting repaired in, in some cases. A lot of that has been driven by the weather. In winter, the asphalt plants close, and there's, there's no way to get the asphalt there. But we've come up with solutions for that, and our details, talk a little bit about that in a minute. Quality of repairs. We, we've had some cuts where we see they settle, we, they'll crack around it, material's too high, too low, what have you, just so the quality of repair and warranty of repairs. So, yeah, okay, we get a street fixed, and then if it continues to cause a problem, that was, in our opinion, a utility company's repair, and they need to be responsible for maintaining that cut or replacing the repair or getting it up to the standard we expect. What we have proposed, we have some ordinance revisions, there's a packet, within that packet, you'll see chapter 21, it's about thirty pages worth of ordinance. Section 21 dash four, I believe, is the street cut section, and we've done some changes in there. Some of them are housekeeping, changing division names, some of them are just clarifications that we had some stuff in the ordinance originally that was impractical. And an example being forty-eight hours from the time that you cut the road, having it patched. That is just impractical. The more we talk to the utility companies, and we met with several of the utility companies. So, that was a change. We added a warranty section, we added some safety issues and requirements in, in the ordinance. So, that's in the ordinance, we have the underline and strikeout, so you, you can see what has changed, what has not. We also have a new regulation or detail, that's also in your packet, where it shows some changes that we've made. We've changed the compaction requirement and some backfill, backfill material, what, what you would use if you're backfilling a street cut. Compaction is key. If the backfill's not compacted well, the trench will settle. That has the cold weather or the winter repair method in it as well. So, we have means for addressing the street cut in the middle of the winter that just sits there and becomes a maintenance issue. We're working on utility contractor education, where we're getting out and showing, meeting with them, showing them how to do stuff, how to do stuff properly, and trying to use some real word, real, excuse me, real-world examples in, in that training. We also work with the utility coordination group, where we're looking at longer-range projects and our overlay projects, so we can try to schedule these together. And let's say we have a street to be paved this year, and gas company's got a project to go there next year, what can we do to coordinate that, to make the two projects work together? And also, we're working to increase the frequency of inspection. So, so again, we're going to hit the highlights. Again, if there's any questions, you want to get into detail as we go through this, certainly welcome it. And we will welcome your feedback and input on this. And I'll hand it over to Melissa at this time.
Can Melissa, Councillor, Public Works? And as you recall, we came to you last September in a working session and kind of presented some of the problems that we were having with obstructions on right-of-way. You know, from the fences to the landscape, to the mailboxes, it was almost impractical to enforce them all. And I think what we walked away from that session was to kind of come up with a common-sense approach to enforcement. So, one of the first things that we did was look at the current ordinance which you have, it's the first section of chapter 21, and see what it exactly said that we were supposed to be enforcing. And what it boils down to is, it says pretty much any obstruction of any nature, which is just almost impossible. The fact is, there's, there's numerous obstructions on right-of-way, private property, they have, you know, decorative mailboxes, you know, it may not be intrusive, but it's there. So, you know, we, we have to come up with a way that we pick and choose the ones that cause us the, the biggest problems and, and present the biggest issues. So, the problems that we see, and, and Joe is our eyes out in the field, he receives the calls for any and all obstructions on right-of-way, are things, the biggest things we see are safety, ones that cause safety implications. And those could be things that are, cause a sight visibility issue. Most of the time, it's fences or shrubbery that's not cut, you know, and over time, these have grown, they may not have been a problem before. Things that may be right off the edge of the roadway, that could be a collision possibility, brick mailboxes, boulders and decorative rocks, or maybe the rocks that are around the corners to keep people from running off the road, or the same rocks that if you run off the road and hit, it could cause a bigger problem. Additionally, some of the more recent problems we've had, or maybe these items aren't safety implications, but they're, they're there on our right-of-way, and maybe we need to come in and do an infrastructure improvement project. We need to restore that ditch because water's ponding out in the roadway and it's degrading our asphalt, or it's ponding in the neighbor's front yard, and if the ditch was there as it was designed to be there, it wouldn't be happening. So, we go in and we want to put this ditch in, but these people have a shrub line or, you know, that's been there for fifteen years, they've been trying to grow, they have brick mailboxes, decorative items, and things of that, that nature that they don't want to lose. But first and foremost is our, is our infrastructure needs, and, and those are things we run into daily, so that's one of our other big problems. And finally, consistency of enforcement. You know, things get brought to our attention that we do see a problem with, but it's no different per ordinance as down the street, a block, something else is in right-of-way. Well, you know, if we go around town and try to enforce all of those things, it's, it's not practical. So, we just need a, a method to be more consistent. And these are some pictures you may have recalled from last time. In the background there, you'll see the brick columns right off the back of the curb. You know, depending on speeds and volumes, maybe it's not such a big deal, but it's, it's just right there on the edge of the curb. Here you'll see the boulders, I mean, there's the edge line for the cars. And this particular roadway, despite the speed limit, the traffic is, runs fairly quickly through there, and you know, if they drop off the edge of the road, that could be a collision, collision problem. Here's a fence that is obviously a sight visibility issue, which we are working to get resolved as we speak, so hope to see that come down. And then again, we talked about infrastructure improvement. This was a recent project that we were trying to get that water off the roadway and needed to restore the ditch line. And maybe not in this case, but in a lot of these cases, there's things that, you know, we have to pull up that the homeowners are not happy about to restore that ditch. So, those are some problems we run into. The solutions that we found in that packet, chapter 21, we have proposed some revisions. And I'll just briefly state that to eliminate the vagueness and the impractical enforcement of all obstructions, we specified signs, obviously buildings, brick mailboxes, columns, and fences, for sure. You know, we don't want to see any of those things in the right-of-way. We kind of leave it open, if it's a safety hazard, as we, we feel, we have the right to, to remove it. And what we base that on is some engineering standards, site triangles, clear zones, based on the speeds and volumes of roads, there's a distance from edge of travelway that you want to see clear. So, we have those things that we can refer to determine if there's safety problems. We also added language in there to, and we kind of mimic the language in the zoning ordinance for non-conforming structures, so to grandfather these items in. If they're okay and they exist, you know, we're not going to go around and spend time to, to take them out unless they're brought to our attention as a hazard. We have developed a brochure for the public that we are going to distribute, kind of educating them on what is right-of-way, what does that mean, why do we need it? And finally, I've provided a enforcement protocol in your packet, and it basically takes where we left off back in September. What is a common-sense approach to enforcing these items? And what we stated there is if it meets either of the two items I discussed, safety implications or functionality of our infrastructure, then we reserve the right to address those items. So, we feel that those are going to be our basis for contacting that owner and asking for them to remove it, and if they don't, following up per ordinance on removing that item. And again, I'd like to iterate that, you know, Joe's out there, he responds to complaints, he looks at those, talks to the owner. If we see them when we drive around, we respond to those, but we are not going to go out and look for these things unless they're brought to our attention, because it's just, it's impractical, and, and we're trying to find something that is consistent and easily enforced. So, that. I'll turn it over to Mark.
I'm Mark Apsher, the Traffic Engineer with Public Works. And my section today is going to be on the on-street parking, and we, the, it's actually backed up with ordinances, so under chapter 21 and chapter 22, there's a traffic management manual, and part of that is the on-street parking policy. And you can see there, it's backed up. And then, on-street parking, we had originally established the on-street parking section of the traffic management manual, and it was a good tool, but we started seeing more and more problems. For example, over here, that truck's actually parked up next to the curb, and vehicles are having to go out into the incoming traffic to go around it. We start seeing more and more problems related to the bigger vehicles parking, they park in cul-de-sacs, they park pretty much anywhere they could for a period of time, and, you know, having these vehicles removed or add additional signage, things like that. We wanted to try to address that problem. In addition, we noticed that more and more people were having kind of issues, not understanding our basic, you know, you can't park here policies and stuff. And then, two, our emergency vehicles were having problems going through neighborhoods with vehicles parked on both sides of the roadway. So, we wanted something in writing that we could have set out there and say, this, this is the problem, this is what we're going to do. And the way we did that is, we actually revised the on-street parking section of the traffic management manual. It was originally about eight, eight pages, now it's a little over thirty pages. We expanded some areas. We expanded some areas, kind of explained some stuff, and said, this is why we do this. We looked at national guidelines to look at how we're making our parking restrictions in comparison to national code and state code and, and other cities where they have parking removal and not parking. We also want to try to explain why, when you have a perfectly good road, we don't have parking on both sides of it, and it's related to traffic flow and how these vehicles interact. We have a whole new section in there explaining that. We also have a new section on safety related to parking restrictions, why, why you can't park within a certain distance of stop signs, why emergency vehicles have to go through these neighborhoods. A fire truck really can't wiggle through an area that other cars can. And then we've got another section on weight and large vehicles. The problem with weight is some of these larger vehicles were fully loaded, parked on cul-de-sacs, and eventually that, that it will kind of work on the roads. They're not really designed for that type of parking. And then two, if you have a lot of vehicles going through an area, they can wear out the roads a lot quicker than normal. And then two, large vehicles, parking restrictions goes back to that original slide I showed you with the truck parked on the side of the road. We wanted something in place to, to really help law enforcement, everybody else kind of address that problem. And then in doing all this, we're actually going to work on revising the city ordinances, and you should have a copy of that as well. And two, Melissa actually put up our new revised parking section on our website, I believe it's a drafted link. So you can go there and look at the new proposed on-street parking. And that kind of covers it for my part, and I'm going to...
Can you go back one slide?
Sure can.
New sections on weight and large vehicle parking restrictions, is that code for large trucks parking in subdivisions?
Yeah, it really is code for 18-wheelers parking in subdivisions. We get a lot of cabs parking out in subdivisions, parking along the street, and sometimes they'll park right across from each other. So the only thing that kind of fit in between there is a Volkswagen or small, you know, that type of vehicle. As far as emergency vehicles, they got to go all the way back around to another way. On cul-de-sacs, it's a real huge issue, because obviously you can't get back into an area when you've got a big truck parked out there. But yeah, that's code for some way to try to keep these trucks from parking out there and blocking roadways. And then we'll go ahead and hand it over to Storm if there's not anything else. And there we go. Matt Powell's going to take over from here.
Afternoon. Like Mark said, my name's Matt Powell, I'm the Environmental Coordinator with the City of Bowling Green. I want to address just a few quick changes we made to our Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual, and one small tweak to the ordinance that's going to be required to go along with that. Let me begin by saying that the overall overarching goal for this was to decrease the burden on developers, folks that are coming in for permits, and increase how fast that they can get those permits through the process. Essentially, what we did to our manual, and I don't know if any of you all have seen it, but when it's printed out and it's paper form, it's enormous, it's a thousand pages. We, we prefer that folks look at that online, and we've got it there, it's broken up into small parts, so that folks can quickly go to whichever section of it is that they need. We reformatted it, brought it up to date a little bit, it looks a little nicer, table of contents, and those things are a little more clear. We made some tweaks throughout to reflect some recent changes in state and federal regulations, so that the city is not more burdensome in some areas than, than the state or federal requirements are. We brought ours up to snuff with theirs, and those are an equal playing field. The biggest thing that we did, the most marked change throughout the whole manual is in the post-construction section. This is an area of stormwater compliance that we've been involved in since 2008, which requires permanent post-construction water quality treatment on development and redevelopment. What we've done there is took a sample project, it's an actual project from the City of Bowling Green, removed the identifying markers, had an engineering firm go through that, and for instance, take a look at each one of the design practices that we use, apply it to that specific site, and go 100% all the way through that, showing all the math, all the steps, exactly what it is that the city's looking for, for compliance when it comes to designing post-construction water quality devices. And I'm sure that if you were to survey our permit applicants, those people that have been through that process are going to be the ones who've had the most problems, most complaints with the amount of time that it takes our office to get those turned around. And when I say "our" office, I mean me. So we've tried to address all of those issues. We did put this out before a review committee of folks from the industry. We chose engineers, manufacturers, and frequent submitters, folks that are coming to us for permits quite a lot. We've shown them what we've done, everyone seemed pleased, they all had a say in the matter as to, as to the changes that we've made. We feel that we've not only made the process easier for them, faster for them, we've also decreased our exposure for non-compliance with the state and federal regulations as we mirror them a little more closely now. Took out some things that were, that were thoughts from way back when we first started that were, that were causing some confusion. So in essence, it's clear, more concise, and more helpful to those folks that are coming to us for permits. As part of that, it's part of that decreasing the burden, if you very, very strictly read the federal guidelines for how to develop this program, the only trigger that they include for the inclusion of post-construction water quality devices is that the project disturbs greater than one acre during construction. In essence, that implicitly states that someone would go into a field, regrade the field, put the field completely back in grass, and then be required to treat the water that runs off of that grass in a rain event for quality, which we're sure is not the intent of the law. The intent of the law is to treat stormwater generated from impervious surfaces. So what we've added is a second trigger that also states that not only must you disturb greater than one acre of ground during the construction process, you also must add 10,000 square feet of impervious surfaces. In order to comply the best that we could with the federal guidelines, that's irrespective of what's there to start with. So you don't get to consider what surfaces are there that are removed or added, it's only if you construct 10,000 square feet of new impervious surfaces, you are subject to this guideline. And that's actually the only tweak to the ordinance that was needed as the ordinance references the Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual. So most of the changes occurred in the manual, this is, this is the one that we're going to need there. And that's, that's really the sum total of the stormwater changes for this round. Like Jeff said in the very beginning, everything that we do, we try to refer back to our department's mission, which is to safely, efficiently, and professionally enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Bowling Green. My, myself and my colleagues will be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
I appreciate the fact that you included users of the product involved in revising that, that...
Well, they're the ones that are...
Because we'll hear about it if you don't, so you might as well get involved in it in the first place.
That's right. They're the ones that are, that are struggling with this. It was, it was brand-new for everyone when it was released back in 2002, and there are 144 cities in the state of Kentucky, and every contractor that wants to build in them, and we're all trying to figure out just exactly what it is the state and federal government needs from us, and we, we feel like we've made another step in that direction, but we've got to work together.
Questions are coming.
I have a question for Jeff, please.
Yes, sir.
What about the street cuts that are in need of repair now? Is there any thought about what you'll go back and do to some of them that are in bad shape?
Okay. We have, and let me, and these are ones that have been completed, they've just over time. We did not have a warranty provision in our code before. So we have gone back through and repaired several of those recently in some subdivisions. And if we get some that are to that need, we'll definitely go out and make repairs in-house using our staff.
Anything else?
Thank you.
The only thing I'd ask, Mr. Fibo, if, if this material's available, if they can include it in with our packet so we can read it beforehand, so that...
Okay.
It's hard to ask intelligent questions, listen after reading this.
And again, we were, we're still, have been working on that. What we would propose is bring an ordinance revision to you next time, so definitely we'll, we'll have that to you in plenty of time.
Well, I've got them here to read now, so I just, I just got it when we sat down.
Well, we, we were still meeting with some utility companies today and putting some final tweaks on that. So it was still very much a work in progress as of this morning, but I do apologize for that.
Well, it's just I, I don't know what to ask because it didn't get you straight.
Okay. On the, I guess that we'd prefer to bring that to you guys first and second meeting in July. So, I mean, we'll have that to you and whatever information you have need from us.
It'll be different than this.
Shouldn't be. If, if it is, it will clearly point that out to you.
When should we see some improvement in the, I'm back on street cuts again. When should we see improvement then in, in new street cuts going by the, when will this all go into effect, once we pass it in July?
With an ordinance...
And the warranty and everything?
Revision, with the two readings of an ordinance, this would be fully in effect. Now, there'll be some existing street cuts that are already out there technically. I guess some could argue that it'd be on the old standard, we would be pushing them to make those repairs as quickly as possible and in accordance with our standards.
Okay. Anything else?
One thing, I don't have a copy of the memo for this work session, but I think I included a link to our traffic manual that has kind of the draft revisions that Mark spoke of, should be a link on there, and then also Matt's stormwater revisions, which are already up and, and online and active. So those are there. If you have any questions or get stuck or something's not working right, let us know.
Okay, appreciate that, thanks. Anything else, Mr. Fibo?
No. We were just, if you'd like to do another show and tell on any particular section, we could do that before you vote on it. From our, from our point of view, most important thing is we wanted you to know that we are going to do a more, a better job on the street cuts and use both protocol and enforcement. We need your support on the obstruction of right-of-way. I think Melissa identified the trade-off there well. People have a very intimate relationship with the right-of-way out front, and we don't want to, we're trying to balance that without being viewed as anti-citizen, but it is problematic, and we're looking for your support. We couldn't find a common ground other than it has to be a public safety issue. If a person, an individual is going against public safety or creating a problem for the rest of the citizens, we thought that was the cutting edge. So that was the common-sense parameter we're using.
And I think sometimes the citizens may get carried away with some landscaping projects and do a little too much, so when it's brought to their attention, I'm sure that the vast majority would be very cooperative, so I think it'll be fine.
Is there something we could do, understand, around where I live, people put rocks to keep people from running in their yard, and I see that's a hazard, but also have neighbors who have their yard completely messed up because drivers are driving in it, going around the curb, and they've replaced the grass, replaced the grass. So how can we help citizens like that? Who don't have anything obstructing them?
Right, I know Karen has worked with neighborhoods with the SNAP grants, and a lot of them use that money for curb around the radiuses to keep people, for, they like the aesthetics of it, but for also the reason people cut through the corners there, that's one means.
We just partnered with the county over in Shawnee on one that was just, had been a problem for years, and it worked out during the curb around it.
We could start a radius program. We could start a full-fledged program. We have stormwater, we have sidewalks, and we have replacement of existing old sidewalks, but we don't have any. We could dedicate some money in future budgets to identify maybe 10 or 15 intersections and make that a priority. But you're still going to have that rogue intersection that you, that's going to be problematic.
Anyone else? Any other item?
No.
All right, we'll conclude the work session and return at 7:00. Thank you for tuning in.